Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the first official, I guess, school committee meeting of the new school year. Everyone's all excited about getting started, and so are we. September 3rd, it's a regular school meeting for the Wareham School Committee. At this particular time, if anyone would like to address the school committee on any issue, please come to the front table or identify yourself and give us what's on your mind. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Andrews.
Hi Angela.
I currently have, hi, I currently have three children in the school system, two right here at the middle school, and then one over at Deacon's, a first grader. I will admit that I am not one for change, however, I am very much happy with the restructuring of the elementary schools. I really do like that idea.
Oh goodness, thank you.
No, I do. And I was very much for that.
It's nice to get a happy person every once in a while.
I do think it's going to be a good thing for the school system, and I really do think it's good for our students. As a former teacher, I came from a system where we did just this, and it really, till this day, it's still working out very well. The reason I'm here, though, however, is these changes have brought about negative effects to the busing, as far as my neighborhood is concerned. When I saw the new posting about a week or so ago, I kind of thought for a second, am I reading this wrong, or, you know, maybe this is just a mistake? And when I realized it wasn't, I contacted the Transportation Department, because what they were expecting my six-year-old, as well as the three other six-year-olds in my neighborhood to do, seemed a bit unacceptable. When I contacted him, I got back a response that I felt was very unsatisfactory, and figured I would bring my concerns to you guys tonight. I live on a cul-de-sac in Oakdale Heights Lane. Originally, her bus stop was right at the end of my street, and has been for, I've got a neighbor here right now, for as long as you can remember, correct? It's always been-
So this is in the Oakdale area, is that correct?
Yes, yes. It's always been there. So this year, they decided, because of the changes, that they, for whatever reason, could no longer come into the neighborhood, and now expect my child, as well as three other six-year-olds, to walk from there all the way up to Sandwich Road, which is a very busy road, it's a main road in the town, as you know, and it is a hike. Just to prove a point, I taped her the other day, walking this distance. It took her over 12 minutes. I decided to walk it myself, hoofing it, you know, to see how quickly I could get there, and it still took me over seven minutes to get there. I think that's unacceptable for a six-year-old. We have, at the moment, the parents and I have been driving to the bus stop, which doesn't even make sense to me, that you'd have to drive to a bus stop. I rearranged my schedule this week so I could do that. My concern is, I cannot physically get her there in the morning, starting next week, and I don't know, I can't expect her to walk that distance alone, and it's not my neighbors' or my parents' or anybody else's responsibility to get her there. I don't understand where, she's actually the first bus stop, we learned that yesterday.
And she's going to what school?
She's going to Deacon's. I don't understand where, especially where she's the first bus stop, why it just can't loop around into that neighborhood. All four of the children are right there at that one spot, and then go back around again on to Sandwich Road, because according to the thing that was posted, I believe there are two other stops on Sandwich Road. But being that we're the first one, again, like I said, I don't see why they couldn't just swing in there, get the kids, and then pull back out again. Because as it is, her bus used to always come anywhere between like 8:10 and 8:15. She's now expected to be there at 7:35 and sit on that bus for 50 minutes. Now, when we came to these original meetings, when this was all discussed, we were assured, you know, because one of our biggest concerns as parents was the bus. We were assured that the bus rides wouldn't be longer than 30, you know, 40 minutes max. Hers is 50 minutes, and again, at six years old, that's a long time. Like, I can imagine how tired they must be by the time they actually get to school. I understand that changes need to be made, but it just seems like something else can be done. I mean, this is a huge expectation for that of a six-year-old. So I, I mean, like I said, I expressed my concerns in an email to Jeff Tatro, and, you know, he, I understand he's got a job to do, and, you know, he said he felt as if these changes weren't made without careful consideration for all the students across the town. He understood that some children would have a longer bus ride or a longer distance. In my case, it's both. But I just, I'm hoping that something can be done about it, because it just doesn't seem fair.
Well, whenever a parent calls for any issue, we want to make sure that, the parent may not always hear what they want to hear, but we always want to make sure that they get treated with respect, and I hope you were treated with respect.
Oh, no. I just felt like he-
It wasn't a satisfactory solution.
Yeah, it wasn't, he wasn't rude in any way, no. I just-
I can't, because we're policymakers, I can't speak for the Transportation Department or the superintendent, but I can probably assure you that the superintendent will have some conversations with Transportation Department over this issue.
And I know that I'm not the only one with concerns. I'm willing to, you know-
Well, I have to be honest with you, and Mr. Tatro was honest at the last school committee meeting. He said there were going to be some glitches. And, you know, to be patient with us, and we're going to try to work through them.
And he did say, in fact, he said, you know, we have to stick with it for at least the first few weeks, and if we commit changes without affecting any other students, we will.
Right, because it does snowball, and it is interrelated. Any solution that you make is an interrelated solution, especially when we're running so close to the vest, with all our buses at capacity, and trying to minimize the cost of the transportation. So there's a multitude of issues, but I understand, and I'm sure the committee does, you know, your concerns, obviously, and I'm sure that there'll be a conversation between the superintendent and the Transportation Department, not only about your issue, but that we've had a couple of glitches that we have to deal with.
Okay. Well, can I expect to possibly hear something from someone?
I can't speak for them. They can speak for them.
We will get back in contact.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, too.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Could you identify yourself?
I'm Heather Hogan.
Hi, Heather.
I, I just want to reiterate, yesterday at Minnet, it was, it was a little crazy there, and all the staff was awesome. They really handled things so professionally. The teachers were all smiling, and the kids were all smiling, and at the end of the day, I think that's the best that we can hope for. So, you know, as another parent, a good job was done.
Right.
I'm actually here for something else. I am here to ask a little bit of clarification for the staffing at the high school. I'm looking for, I tried to get some information today, and yesterday, and wasn't able to do so. I am concerned that there is no school psychologist or adjustment counselor available to the high school students with social-emotional needs at this time. I wasn't able to identify anyone who has clinical background at the high school. I don't know if it's just that I haven't found that person, or there truly isn't anyone there. So I'm hoping that I can get some clarification about that.
Well, it's an operational issue that I can't even discuss, because I really don't have that much knowledge on it.
Okay.
I will have Dr. Marks contact you with the information-
Okay.
-we do have, and she will contact you tomorrow.
Okay, because I know a couple of the kids that I have, I do work with, have not had, they've been given PARAs as clinical support. And a PARA does not have the training to support a child who is having a social-emotional crisis. And I'm very concerned about how these students, and their anxiety and their frustrations, are going to affect the other members of the classrooms. Because when you have behavior problems, behavior problems are kids that are not functioning well in a classroom.
And best to deal with it early, too.
Right. So, so I do hope that I hear from Mrs. Marks soon, because I am very concerned. And I know I'm not the only parent, I'm just, like Angela said, I'm just the one that could stand up and talk about it.
No, and, you know, I admire you for doing it, you know, and that's what we're here for. We're here to solve problems and to make it work.
Okay. And actually, if you turn around and you see the lady in the green, kind of, that's Dr. Marks, and if you would give her your phone number, I know she'll contact you.
Thank you. See, I knew I came to the right place. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time that would like to address the school committee? All right, moving along. Good news, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I would, we're back to videos. I'm so excited to tell you.
Very good.
And I, what I would like to point out is, this video was shot yesterday and today, and if you noticed in the classroom, there was learning going on, there was activity going on. We are up and running. Today was better than yesterday, and so we know tomorrow will even be better. So we're off, off and running.
Thank you. Any good news from the committee? We'll start down at this end of the table. Mr. Lazarus?
I'm sorry?
Any good news?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mrs. Vugan?
I just wanted to speak to the open houses that the Minnet and Deacon's schools did for the parents. The PTAs put on, and also the staff and the administration, did a phenomenal job of opening up the buildings early, and allowing parents to come in and tour around the building. For a lot of these kids, it was the first time that they were going to this new school. And so giving them the opportunity to come in and find out where the cafeteria is, and find out where, you know, their classroom is, and to kind of look around, I think did a lot for parents, but especially the kids that, you know, might have been a little bit apprehensive, not only starting school for the first time, but then also going to new school from the one that they were used to. So I just want to say hats off to the PTA, as well as to everyone involved in pulling those off.
You stole my thunder, but I'll diddle with that. Because I thought, every report that I've got, both at Minnet and at Deacon's, was positive. Participation was positive, incredible participation from the faculty, so I got nothing but good things to say, so I echo your enthusiasm for that.
I changed my mind.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Two things.
Okay.
Number one, on Thursday morning, I was invited to breakfast at the high school, for the high school staff, and there was an awful lot of excitement in the room. A number of those people have been there for quite some time, but they're there, they're fresh, they're, it was nice to see some new faces. And Tuesday afternoon, Monday, Tuesday, school started on Tuesday. It's what happens when you retire. Tuesday afternoon, I spoke with Mr. Palladino at the high school, and he was ecstatic. He said things went more smoothly than he thought they would. So I think that's good on both counts.
Very good, very good. Mr. Flaherty?
I don't have any added good news, but along those lines, I remember Dr. Shaverhood mentioned maybe us all doing a tour at the schools, and should probably come up with the time to do that.
I'd love to.
We could do it before we eat sometime, and then we could probably just come back here for the meeting.
I'd like to do it while it's, like, during the day, while the kids are there, you know?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Oh, yeah.
If people are available, quite. Okay, um, Mr.-
What's that?
What's that? A student representative is not here, so she's going to be late, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. All right, is, if there is no other good news, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. We'll do them one at a time. Looking for an approval for the minutes for July 23.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented for July 23. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's 5-0-0.
Abstain.
4-0-1.
No.
Thank you.
No.
You abstain?
Yes.
3-0-2.
3-0-2, thank you. On August 20th, approve the minutes for August 20th. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
I have a sec, I have, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Oh, excuse me. I think, I think we held on to these, because you had a question about them the last time around.
No, it was the 23rd.
Oh, so, all right.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0-0. Okay, next order of business. Madam Superintendent, report of the administrative structure.
You know, there's been some questions throughout the community last year, and through the summer, about the number of administrators we have that were top-heavy. You know, we put information out about the number of administrators we have in comparison to other districts. But what I followed with this, at this meeting, is when you put in your district with the Department of Education, it brings about 11 schools that are like your district, whether it be in free and reduced lunch, MCAS scores, et cetera, et cetera. And then you can look at your data as you compare to the other schools. So I included it in this packet, and I looked at administrative cost. So for the 11 schools, we rank 10th in our per pupil expense per administrative cost, which means we are the one from the bottom in what we spend in administrators compared to other schools.
Other like schools.
Other like schools. And so when, when people say that, you know, we've always said, no, we're not top-heavy, we're extremely lean, and this is just one more piece of evidence that supports the fact that we operate with less of an administrative structure than other like schools. Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Correct me if I'm wrong, is this the, basically, the list that comes up for the DART analysis?
Yes.
And I figure, do you remember what DART stands for? It's like District Analysis.
Yeah.
But basically, yeah, I mean, the state is saying, these are schools that are like yours. You know, I mean, we like to compare ourselves to ORR, or BORN, or even Sandwich sometimes, but this, as far as the state is concerned, this is what they lump us into, for good or ill. I mean, I'm sure a lot of people look at this, and they'd be like, you know, we're nothing like, you know, Athol. I hope not. But, um, anyway, so-
Oh, I know somebody who lives in Athol. I kind of like it.
No, I love vacationing in Athol. But anyway, so, but that's, I mean, I can see people looking at this report and being confused as to why it has these towns in there, but that's why.
Right. You know, and the average per pupil cost for administrative cost is $471. Our cost is $326. So you can see we're significantly lower than the per pupil state cost.
Anyone else have anything to say on the, on the report? Yeah, oh, Mr. Swat?
You want to finish your thought?
Yeah. Just, I mean, and frankly, I mean, this is independently verifiable. I mean, if anyone wanted to go to the DESI website and plug in BORN, or plug in ORR, or CAVR, or anyone they want, they could do that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't make up these numbers.
No, I mean, but you didn't, like, call them. I mean, it's, it's on the website, you know?
So just to be clear, we did not, we did not pick the school, the districts that we are comparing ourselves to. We are near the bottom of the comparable districts. We are more than 30% below the state average. And the final question I would have, and I, and it's almost rhetorical, and the definition of an administrative cost, we don't get to make that definition either. We are simply plugging in numbers where they tell us to plug in those numbers, and they determine what is administrative and what is not.
Correct.
I think it's clear cut. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, anyone else? Mrs. Vugan?
No.
Okay. I just like to make a couple of points, and one is, five terms ago, when I got on the school committee, I said, we're over-administered. And if I believed, I really believed at that time, at that time, that we were over-administered. But I can honestly say, after five terms, that I don't consider us to be overly administered at all. If anything, we're under-administered, and, you know, that comes with its own set of problems, because anyone that works for a living knows that every single solitary organization out there, whether it be a public organization or a private organization, needs to be administered. They need people to administer policy. And unfortunately, you know, I just, I think that people have this idea that we can run a school system without administration, and you just can't do it. It's not possible. And I think what this says is that we're certainly not over-administered, and if anything, I think that at some point in time, we have to look at our administrative costs and administrative functions, and see, are we, are we doing the best we can for our district based on the number of administrators that we have? So I think there's a double, a double-edged coin to that, to this report. And I hope I'm not reading into it, but I feel that there is. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Financial report for FY14. Mr. McMillan, you're on, you are on.
That sounds ominous.
This is a very comprehensive report, I might add.
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening.
I've pulled out a few of the key charts, just to give us an overview before we get into discussion. I haven't circulated slides, because this comes straight from the report, which was included in your papers. I just wanted to give you an idea of, you know, what we're trying to do in the business office, and the approach we've taken to this report. You know, I mean, some of this, you know, is almost too obvious to be worth mentioning, but we're trying to be accurate and consistent, which means trying to use the same definitions for things. When we're reporting information, you can rely that it's the same groups of, you know, if we are seeing something as a particular category, you know it always covers the same expenditure. So, or if we change it, being conscious that we're changing it and understanding why. So consistency is almost as important as accuracy.
Flashing.
We've tried to, you know, and this report tried to be transparent and clear. We've included, and this follows on to the next point, have been comprehensive, so it's including all our sources of income. So this report doesn't just cover the general fund that we receive through the town, but it also covers all our revolving funds and grants. And I've, you know, at risk of overloading with data, I've included as much information in here as we can, showing you, giving you as much data as I can at your fingertips. And, you know, just to come back to that consistency approach, this approach is largely the same as the report I did last year, the same sort of structure, I've just edited, edited, and changed a few things reflecting the conversations we've had during the year. So this is a table which comes from, which was in the report, and summarizes some of our key, the key financial statistics. This is our expenditure, our chapter 70 state aid and the net school spending for the last three years. The report did have, you know, the report goes back a little bit further, but it's just, for want of space on the slide and making it legible, it just goes back three years. And what you can see, and I imagine this is one of the areas you may have questions about, is what I've included here is a line under, from local appropriations for schools. There's the money for, by school committee, and there's the by town. That's the money that is spent by the town on our behalf. And it's, you know, we know that as the in-kind expenditure. So I've included a short description on that in this paper. And the in-kind expenditure is the funding that we receive from the town by way of services that they purchase on our behalf, so, or that they provide us. So for example, a proportion of the town treasurer's salary, we pay for, because we use, because they provide us with some oversight. A bigger percentage of the town accountant's salary we pay, because again, we make up a large part of this, the town's accounts. Clearly, though, the biggest part of the in-kind costs are health insurance. And that is, you know, the biggest part of our, the, the funding we receive from the town in kind. And it's also the one that raises eyebrows, when you look at the change from FY12 to FY13, we saw a large increase in our health insurance costs. And that was twofold. One, it was because our costs are going up. It was just that the cost of health insurance, the town providing health insurance increased at a considerable rate. There was a, there were some errors in previous calculations, which kept the number lower than it might otherwise have been. And also, hey, the healthcare holiday in FY12 brought down the cost. So actually, it brought down FY12 cost, but then it increased FY13 cost, because we had to make up the difference. And we're going to get into kind of the intricacies of the healthcare costs, the town, but the town had to pay extra back in to repay the employer side for the healthcare holiday. So that artificially lowered FY12 costs, and increased FY13 costs. So that's why you see that big jump from FY12 to FY13. You know, so the impact of the healthcare holiday is, has passed, so that shouldn't be seen in FY14, plus the employee, employees now taking a bigger percentage of the healthcare costs. So I'm expecting, although it's not confirmed yet, and this is really just a ballpark figure at the moment, the in-kind costs for FY14 to be lower. So that's the sort, that's the key bit from that I wanted to highlight from the top half of that spreadsheet, from this table. The second half, the bottom half gets into the required net school spending. So the state has a formula which determines how much the schools, the district or the town, rather, has to spend on the schools, and that's that required net school spending amount. And this table compares that to the actual net school spending, so that we can see if we meet the state's set required net school spending. You know, as you can see from this table, and we have, have discussed previously, while before FY13, we were very close to net school spending, and I should say, if you fall below net school spending, then there are repercussions with the state, and they can withhold funding if it gets to that. We were very close to net school spending, and right on it. But with that huge jump in our healthcare costs, that, that is included as part of our net school spending, and so although we see no tangible benefit to that, it puts us much further above our net school spending requirement. So there's a-
So could I interrupt?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Would you like us to ask questions as we go along, or would you like to finish a section first? Which would you prefer?
Whichever's easiest. I'm happy to take questions if it-
Well, why don't we, why don't we let you finish a section first, and then we'll open up some questions, okay?
Yeah, that sounds good. So I think, I was just going to, so, yeah, I expect the, the amount over net school spending to fall next year, you know, coming back to that healthcare holiday issue, no longer being there, and the increased amounts that the employee- You know, coming back to that healthcare holiday issue no longer being there and the increased amounts that the employee, the employee is paying as part of their health insurance, plus the changes the town is making to move into, to move back to the Mayflower Health Group, which is old Plymouth County, the health insurance. So it's been as part of a bigger group that's going to have lower costs for us overall. So all of these factors I think will help to reduce that. I don't think it's going to be sufficient to bring us right down back to net school spending, but we'll still, you know, it'll be lower than it was last year. Okay, I think that's me finish that section.
All right. What I'd like to do is have folks just ask one question and then we'll go back to you if you have another question. That would give everyone a chance to ask a question. Anyone have a question on this section? Mr. Swett?
It's an excellent report and I appreciate the information that it transmits. The revolving fund and grant line, especially if you look at it from FY ten, to say there's a clear trend is an understatement. My question is that we, at least for the last five years, peaked at about six point three million in FY eleven. And now at FY fourteen, we're at five point one. So that's, that's a loss of one point two million dollars. I wondered, I wonder if any, and you may not be able to answer this question, but perhaps the superintendent or members of her management team that are in the audience, could answer the question of, what are the repercussions of losing one point two million dollars worth of revolving funds and grants? And the corollary to that question is, have we been forced to make up for those losses by expenses in the LEA budget?
Good point. Anyone to answer the question?
I mean, the, so the, in theory, the idea behind grants or the majority of grants, the stipulation is that they should not replace town funding. So the idea is that they should be funding activities or teaching that is, that would not otherwise be provided.
Augmenting.
Exactly, yes. So in theory, so the theory of course is that, you know, you have money for a short term, it meets a need. And ideally, over time, that need goes away, that is dealt with and then you move on.
Please elucidate all those things that, those needs that have disappeared.
Yeah.
I would love to hear that list of the needs that have disappeared.
Yeah, it's the short one.
It's a short one, isn't it? Yes.
And they're, and so over time, I mean, I mean, I don't want to, but you know, if you, so if you employ somebody on a grant and it's not replacing a function which better be provided, it still hurts when you lose that, that position because you, they form, they provide an important part within the school. And that's why, you know, as we saw some at the end of last year when we were reducing staffing, some of those were, actually, I mean, some of those reflected the needs, you know, that were no longer met by grants. And we were so, and we carry, you know, we make it as much long as we can from the LA if we find it valuable over time, then especially as the grants go down, those positions are lost.
Maybe you could just give me one or two examples of that one point two million of services that we no longer provide because one point two million isn't coming into the district. And I, I agree, this may not be, you may not be the right person to answer this question.
I think part of the services that we've lost would be intensive work with students in small groups. We've not been able to employ reading specialists or coaches because of that. Also, with some of the grant, grants that we've had, we've been able to purchase some materials. We're no longer able to purchase some of that material because there's not the grant funds available. So part of what we really work very hard at doing is, is not supplanting, but supporting and...
So is it mostly impacting the elementary schools?
No, it, it impacts, it impacts district wide.
Thank you.
If I could just make a point and just ask if I'm on the right track. One of the, one of the, the major impacts, I thought, was Title I. And we, you know, we just can't totally, totally ignore the, the services for academic support that was provided by Title I. And so the district has picked up some of those costs. So I, I think a good portion of that one point whatever is Title I.
I know it is.
You know, and I think Title I, we just can't say, well, we don't have Title, Title I has gone down, so we're not going to provide these academic services anymore. We can't do that. That would be ludicrous. That would be, that would be absolutely the wrong thing to do in terms of the academic success of our kids. So the district has picked that up. And you know as well as I do, it's a matter of stealing from Peter to pay Paul. You know, if we take it out of one pile, then that pile shrinks down and whoever was supposed to get that pile doesn't get their fair share. So it's a catch twenty-two no matter how you look at it. So I think Title I was one of the biggest ones.
I mean, I was just gonna add, I mean, I don't want to lay it on too thick, but, you know, at the same time, there's inflation. So, you know, if it's, you know, so one dollar buys us less now than it did. So not only have we, you know, the number going down hurts us more than the actual figure because in that time salaries have gone up. And other, you know, there's been another impact which means we're able to get less for the money we do have.
Does anyone have another question on this particular report? Mrs. Vugan?
One of the things that stood out to me is when you take a look at chapter seventy-eight, so this is the state funding to us, that it's only gone up over five years, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Hundred and seventy-four thousand? That's absolute...
So, over five years, and it actually went down from ten to eleven, but a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over five years. What would you say that our healthcare costs have increased by if you had to put a dollar amount over it over five years?
I mean, I mean, well, it's hard, you know, take but hundreds of thousands if not millions.
Right. And that's only one cost point to us is the healthcare. When you take a look at cost of living increases, all of that, that's unbelievable. That again, that the state does not make up for the increases and everything else that are happening in the districts around the Commonwealth. Just quickly, the, the in-kind contribution, I know that the, what are we expecting? I know you said that fourteen's going to go down a bit because of the, because finally we're writing the healthcare holiday. But fifteen, if you had a projection, because it looks like we're going, I mean, six point five was in FY ten also.
Yeah. So I, it's, I'm hesitant to put too precise a figure on it. I would expect it to be around, so overall the costs should go down with the move into the Mayflower Health Group. That should help reduce costs. It's part of the reason we're doing it, although there are costs associated with making that change.
Yep.
So I, you know, it's early days, but I hope, hopefully it should be...
You don't have your crystal ball here tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to another question and then we can go back if anybody's got a follow-up. Let me ask somebody else.
He had a question.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Flaherty?
Thank you. Mrs. Vugan touched on what I was going to ask too. I just found it interesting that FY fourteen was the same as FY ten. And when you compare the staffing levels, I mean, at, on page eight of our report, two hundred and forty-five FTEs in FY ten and two hundred and twenty-six in 2014. And I would have expected a lot more drop there with the healthcare benefits, but as you say, we're still playing catch up, I suppose. And, and where does, where does that number come from? I mean, do you come up with that? Does the town give you that?
Which number, the health, the in-kind cost?
Yeah, the, well, all of, the whole, the whole in-kind figure.
So it's a, it's based on past practice of, of services or things that we have, that we pay for. So by and large, it's things that we, that we do get. So like healthcare, like a percentage, but what percentage of the, you know, town accountant's time we get is just something that's been passed.
No, I mean, so, so what, do you think the treasurer or town accountant or the town administrator would agree with these figures?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
They would, okay.
Yes, absolutely. They know them, I mean, they provide them, so.
That, well, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
That would be a better question. Do we agree with them?
I didn't know if you were trying to figure it out or if they gave you this number.
Well, so, I mean, what we're trying, I mean, so, what, as far as possible, we try to be, base the number on actual costs. So for the healthcare costs, it's actual costs. So we went back to look at what healthcare contributions were for FY thirteen and we are doing for FY fourteen. Look at how much, how much, literally, literally how much it costs us to pay healthcare for our employees. So that's an act, so that's, should be an actual cost. And there are some which are more hypothetical, like five percent or whatever percent of somebody's salary.
I mean, we're, we're eating the total cost for the resource officer this year. I mean, that's got to be in there somewhere, right?
No, that's not the total cost. A good part of it, but not the total.
Well, yeah, except for the, I see what you mean. It's the, yeah, it's the, well, the total cost for half a year. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Mr. Lazarus, do you have a question?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anyone want to have a repeat question?
No, I can't.
Okay, move on.
All right. So this is a, in response to a question I received earlier in the week from Mr. Flaherty, I provided some information and I'll circulate this, which is the per student. So it's that same table, but the numbers are per student for that year. So what that shows is obviously, the per student, as the numbers of students have gone down, therefore the per student, the per student cost is a... The, well, it can be seen more sharply in some ways. So the total expenditure, it goes up a lot, goes up more in, from FY twelve to FY thirteen because the number of students go, go down at the same time. So you've got a big increase at the same time as a slight decrease, a decrease in number of students. So it accentuates some of the trends.
Oh, okay, okay. The one in bold, total expenditures.
That's the total, yeah.
So for example, you've got thirteen, eight ninety-one for FY fourteen, total expenditures. And of that, can we extrapolate the, the chapter seventy-eight from that?
Yeah, so if you, so for example, it shows that our chapter seventy-eight per student in FY ten, we got, per student in the district, we got three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And by FY fourteen, we're getting four thousand four hundred and seventy.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that partly explains why our, well, why our chapter seventy-eight doesn't increase as much as it might otherwise is because our student numbers don't increase. And although they do hold you harmless, so they do not let your chapter seventy-eight fall below what it was previously, they don't, they don't, they don't inflate artificially because...
And other districts are getting our chapter seventy-eight also.
For, through school choice or upper K, yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think it's costing us a considerable amount of money. Okay, continue.
All right. So in this, so this is another chart that came, that was in the paper. In the paper I provided, I provided quite a few tables on showing our revolving funds and grants. To try and, you know, so this shows the trend over time for each of our key grants, well, sorry, for overall grants and revolving funds. So you can see that, you know, that big drop in our federal grants from 2011 on. I mean, 2011, you take out 2011, you can see there's just a more gradual trend downwards. 2011 was a, an aberration in the trend. I've also, I also include in the paper to try and make this, you know, seem real, I gave examples of the top ten grants and revolving funds to give you an idea of where that money's actually coming from. I'm trying to, so I also highlighted in the paper some of the key grants and revolving funds, the ones that attract the most attention. So circuit breaker and transportation and school choice, I just put into a bit more detail. So I don't know if there's, shall I stop for questions on those?
Sure.
I have one. Can you explain to me what is included in the private grants?
Yeah. I can, I will.
I bet you it's one.
Yeah, it's just one.
It could be like a make piece maybe.
No, because we, we've received make peace over the last five years.
Yeah.
That's the reason why it stood out to me because we receive grants, so what...
I'll bet you it's one isolated grant.
Then what would eighty make piece and the rest of those be categorized as?
I don't know. Can I get back to you on that? I did have it, but...
Sure, and then just the question that is, how are the eighty make piece grants, another grants that we, how are they categorized? Why wouldn't they be in here? We've received the eighty make piece, that's twenty thousand over the last five years.
The eighty make piece has gone into, is treated as a gift, so it's gone into their revolving accounts.
Okay.
Any other questions on this section? Mr. Flaherty?
What is the kindergarten enhanced program?
What's, what, sorry?
I see the line here for kindergarten enhanced program. What is that? It's probably a question better for the superintendent.
That's...
The K enhanced program.
Yeah.
Kindergarten grant program?
Enhanced, it says here, down below.
Wasn't that some of the programs at East Way Ham?
What page are you on?
Page three of eighteen.
So I will, I will provide more information, but I believe that's the, some grant we received to help provide full day kindergarten.
Yeah, that would be, remember when we, the district signed up to house full day kindergarten?
Full day, the grants from the full day kindergarten, okay.
Yes, this is the grant that helps support full day.
Okay. Great. And what about, what is income eligible, income eligible contract? The last one.
That would be a special service grant for income eligible students to help offset some of their preschool costs. Is that right?
That's right, yeah. Preschool costs for students who qualify based on income.
Okay. We'll come back. Mr. Swett?
School choice. These numbers that I'm looking at for receipts and payments, are these cherry sheet numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they should be.
So...
Well, actually, the cherry sheet, so the cherry sheet number is updated during the year depending on numbers, so it will, it might change.
They may have been the original cherry sheet numbers.
Yeah, ex, well, these should be, these should be the, what is in this report is the final number.
Close enough, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I must admit amazement that our payments to other districts dropped from three hundred and thirty-one thousand to a hundred and nineteen thousand.
No, sorry. So that's, sorry, that's my fault on how this information's been presented. So then the money that's given to other districts under school choice does not appear in this report. That's actually taken out before, that's taken out of our chapter seventy before we get it.
Before you get it.
So...
Those are cherry sheet assessments.
Yeah, so that actually comes out, so payments here is payments, i.e. the money we've received for school choice, how we've spent it.
And, okay, so it's an entirely different...
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
It's already out of the chapter seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Entirely different.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Mrs. Vugan?
So the one point two that we received in 2014 for school lunch, now that we're providing free lunch for all, what does that do to that number?
So that should, I, I mean, we're still in the early days of it, so it depends on a lot of how people respond to being able to get free lunch. So at the very least, I expect the number will, will actually not increase because we receive school lunch. Because now we will get a set amount based on a percentage that we are assessed, a free percentage that we are assessed as having by the state. So I think they assess us as something like eighty-two point five percent. So they say eighty-two point five percent of your people are free, so we're going to give you the equivalent of what you would have received, so per lunch for each of those students. But that, but then the students who now, so people who now receive free lunch, depends, they might now go and spend money on à la carte items as on top of the free lunch they'll receive. So some of those behavioral changes that may or may not happen will affect that eventual number. I'm expecting it, you know, being pessimistic, I'm expecting the number to stay around there, maybe drop a little.
Okay.
Because if I'm just going on... Because if I'm just going on just what I've got, just how much I know I'm gonna get from the state reimbursement. Because what we, what we don't get now is people buying lunches, because you don't, you don't have to buy a lunch anymore. So that full price you would have paid, you don't have to pay that anymore. So you don't get, you don't get that income. You get, but you get much more from the state.
Right.
But how much it will offset the money we don't get is not clear. But what it does mean is we know that every student has, is entitled to a good and healthy nutritious meal from the school and that's what's important and that's why we're doing it. But it's not, yeah, it remains to be seen, but I'm being pessimistic and being pessimistic, I assume it's not a moneymaker. I mean, maybe I'll be proven wrong, but.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flaherty?
Uh, yes, on page four, you have a paragraph on the circuit breaker. And last sentence, it just struck me, this high ending balance will help to alleviate special education costs in FY two thousand and fourteen? Is that two thousand and fifteen?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
See that? And then, so that struck me as a typo, but then I saw that, I was like, okay, great, it'll help alleviate special education costs in this year.
Uh huh.
But we, I mean, we, I think we cut ten positions out of speed before we even started.
Yeah.
So that's a shame.
Well, but we did that with that circuit breaker money in mind.
Yeah.
So, circuit breaker, by and large, what we have used circuit breaker for is to pay, to help pay for the costs of students who receive education out of the district. And that is a number which can fluctuate greatly at short notice. And so is something that is worth treating carefully. And that's why the district has approached this by using the mon, pay using money, money in arrears. So we use what we received last year to pay for this year's, because we know how much we've received. Hey, but we made a something, you know, the numbers we've received, we knew we were getting, so circuit breaker, they tell you the start of the year. So we knew how much we were receiving and how much we were going to spend. Oh, we don't, well, sorry, we knew how much we're receiving, we knew how to spend last year, we don't know how much we're gonna spend this year. We're able to make an estimated, an estimate. But, you know, those costs are, you know, those, we have, they're, those costs, because you know, can increase substantially.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on this section? Move on.
All right. So I've, this is now giving an idea of how we spend our money. This pie chart, just break, just a visual representation of where the money goes. As you can see, it's almost all on a classroom, well, not almost all, sorry, but the largest proportion of it is on classroom and specialist teachers. With instructional, instructional leadership, another significant portion, administration and operations and maintenance. But I think what this shows is just how much of our budget, I mean, so that's only the classroom and specialist teachers, that isn't it? But it just shows, and that's all salaries, so it just shows what a large proportion of us is just going on the teachers. And then, this is the same information, well, some of the same information, but also with previous years' numbers to show how things have developed. So this is from all funds, because I wanted, because I wanted to build, I wanted to show you how we spend all of our money. So this is all, this includes grants and revolving funds to give you a sort of comprehensive view on how we spend that money. So, I, you know, just, so for example, though administration shows an increase actually in the LEA, that's just the money we receive from the town, it actually fell. But there was an increase in some of the grants. Partly because we're out there getting as many grants as we can, every time you add another grant, adds a little bit more money for administering that grant. That we do, also saw an increase in classroom and specialist teachers. And there was one other area. Yeah, insurance and retirement, but most of them, apart from those three, most others fell from FY thirteen to FY fourteen. So that's some. Uh, any questions on that, those slides?
Um, on the classroom and specialists, even though it went up in two thousand and fourteen, it went up very, you know, if you really look at it from a totality, it went up very moderately. Uh, and, and it wasn't, did it went up because we added staff, it went up because it costs us more money to provide for our staff. Um, if anything, we've lost staff, so with cost of living, with step increases, with columns and so forth and so on. And that accounts for it. So, basically, if you look at it from a total staff perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually still going down, is that correct?
No.
So I do actually.
Total numbers.
Yeah, the, the total number from FY thirteen to FY fourteen, just, it fell very slightly from FY thirteen to FY fourteen.
Twenty some odd, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Between these two years, between thirteen and fourteen?
Yeah, no, I saw on the number, and you know, of the FTEs, when we come to later on, don't show, don't show a huge drop from FY thirteen to FY fourteen. There was not, there is however, a big drop going from fourteen to fifteen, but that happened at the end of fourteen, so. So although, so, but you're right, and what drives this increase from FY thirteen to FY fourteen is not adding staff.
Right.
It's, it's a combination, well partly of fewer grants and also and also salary increases, cost of living increases.
And picking up what the, what the voids brought about because of the grants.
Yeah, exactly. So what?
Mr. Lazarus?
And in answer to your question why there's a difference, why there was a drop in two thousand and thirteen, that was a negotiated drop. Because that was the year that the contract, that was the middle of the year of that contract where Unit A accepted a freeze on step movements. A one-year freeze on step movements. So you had one year where you had no step movements across the board.
Okay, any other questions on this section?
Yes.
Mr. Swat?
Mr. Lazarus wants to continue his thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, Mel, go ahead.
No, I, I have a question not related to that.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, the column on payments out of district schools, that two million one sixty-four, is that up a cake?
No, that is the costs for students who receive services at a school, but are still our students. So largely special education students that go to district providers.
Mr. Swat?
The one thing that chart doesn't include is the additional twenty-five percent associated within kind.
Yes.
It's hard to ignore a twenty-five percent increase. And the breakdown, which I greatly appreciate, there's almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of administrative costs charged to us, even though we have fewer employees, fewer students, fewer buildings, et cetera. I'm, I'm not trying to be provocative, but do you really feel you get three hundred thousand dollars worth of value from town employees?
I, I mean.
That's a loaded question.
You know, so if you look.
Poor guy.
I know. I do, I mean, I do feel that, that.
You can play the fifth if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we do, I mean, if you look at, for example, a great example is at the moment, we're changing our healthcare, you know, we're changing, sorry, changing healthcare.
I'm not talking healthcare, this is independent of healthcare.
No, but this is an example, but this at least in the point, which is, we make up the vast majority of those employees who are changing healthcare. But it's been managed by the town. So, you know, I speak to, I spoke to Susan Green in the town administrators office, she's overseeing this. It's, I, I mean, it's broadly, I mean, the majority of her time is dealing with our staff, not, I mean, not, not all, and not even. You know, by a large, a large proportion of the number of people she has to deal with are our, are our employees.
A shrinking percentage.
Shrinking, yeah, well, I mean.
A shrinking number.
They would argue, yes, they would argue that their percentages are shrinking as well, although not their, they can't both be shrinking. But their number is also stagnating, if not shrinking.
I it's, it's a, not just the three hundred thousand, but the six point, the six point five million, it's and as Mr. Lazarus pointed out, I think it was Mr. Lazarus, this has nothing to do with education.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add one thing to that?
No.
Which is, the administration is not, so then in kind, administration is not just salaries, it does pay for some software and things like that, that we also, we also get a proportion of.
Administrative software.
Like our, their accounts, which the town purchases, the accounting software, we get a proportion of that.
Which, which Lynn described this morning as just more work for her.
Yeah. And I'm, and we do, and we do, we pay for more than half of it, I think, at last check, so, because we use it. And then, you know, we have the highest number of transactions going through it, so. I mean, it makes sense that we.
It's good to see the Medicaid as a negative number.
Yeah.
Mr. Flaherty?
Actually, I had a different question now that Jeff brought that up. That six point five million dollars, it doesn't have anything to do with education? Isn't that our healthcare costs included in there for our teachers?
Oh, in the sense of, yes.
Yeah.
It's counted.
In the sense that it doesn't add one teacher.
Oh, yeah, sure, oh, yeah, okay. That, that, that's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else on this section? Move on, Michael.
All right, so, the last couple of sites really just bring us on to what our key drivers are, and we've touched a lot of these issues already. Our student numbers, I, I thought this was just interesting to compare our enrollment a profile to the profile of the state. And so what you can see here, and just, you know, it's just, I think this is useful to bear in mind when you're interpreting how our money is spent and assessing how we spend our money. So you can see here, for example, that a non-English speaking, or people with first language, it's not English, is not, is a disproportionately small part of what we face in our district compared to the rest of the state, or compared to the state average, I should say. Whereas special education and low income are, you know, significantly higher than the state percentage. That was all that slide was about.
Interesting chat, when I, when I saw this, when I went over it at home, it was very interesting to me. That, when you see it in print like that, it really strikes home that fifty-three point eight percent of our students are considered by the state of Massachusetts to be low income. That's, that's a very incredible number. So that's over half of our kids who come from low income homes. That's, that's significant.
Anyone have a question on this section? Mr. Flaherty?
On, on that note, now that we're doing the hundred percent free reduced lunch, will we, will we not be able to track these numbers anymore? Because they're probably not gonna fill out the paperwork, right?
That is an excellent question. So that is something we are working on forms and a means to persuade and cajole and incentivize people to fill them in because we still want to be able to track this information.
Yeah, but it's all voluntary, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, we're gonna look like we're doing a lot, we're gonna look like we have, you know, this rich town in a, in a year or two because no one's gonna fill out the paperwork.
We're in discussion with the Department of Education and, and different parts of the Department of Education and how they want us to deal with that. Because obviously, anybody who enters into this program, you know, Boston does it, you know, Boston did it earlier, like last year. So just understanding how you know, you still maintain this number. I mean, we are able to do. So we are, we're gonna put the forms out and see, you know, if we can persuade people to send them by. We made the form very simple, very straightforward, so hopefully people will still be inclined to send it, to fill in.
I mean, the flip side of that, or essentially the flip side, but I mean, a consequence, excuse me, of that is we talk all the time about perhaps charging for, you know, busing. If they don't fill out those forms, and you know, like, we can't charge free and reduced, and if they're not free and reduced, then we charge them.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, the same is true for athletic fees.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions on this section? Move on, Michael.
So the second, so this kinda sort of, this is sort of part of the same section, but this just following on from that previous slide, it just shows our overall enrollment. But then it also shows our special education numbers and our free lunch numbers at the same time. I mean, and this just continues the trend from last year, whereas our total enrollment fall is falling, our special education num, numbers and our free lunch numbers are not falling at the same speed, so they make up a greater proportion of our population. The one thing I would just, just add to this as a side note, is that these numbers are all based on our October first state report. So, you know, when, you know, because I just reflected, when we talk about our free lunch, some of the percentages you hear there will be slightly different because they were looking at our highest percentage towards the end of the year, so, because the numbers can, obviously can change during the year. I just wanted to mention that to avoid confusion.
Um, is there anything else you want to accentuate?
No.
No? Okay, any concluding comments from the committee?
Sorry, did you mean, I thought you meant just done students.
Yeah, yeah.
One last slide.
I'm gonna let you finish it up.
Just for the sake of completeness, was the staffing composition, which was in the paper, and we, we have already discussed this. There was a small change, you know, so overall, you know, looking back to two thousand and ten, you're seeing a gradual-ish, you know, or actually almost twenty number drop from two thousand and ten in staffing. And obviously after last year, we were expecting that number to be, see another significant drop. I would just say, and which I'm signing not to be able to reflect here, that, you know, there are staff who are not included on this list, which is our our bus drivers and our custodians and our food service workers, because they are not reported to the state, don't have reliable historic data to be able to show in the same way. We are starting to collect it and hopefully in future we'll be able to present that, but no at the moment.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. It was a very comprehensive report. Any further discussion or comments? We'll wrap this thing up, from anyone. Mrs. Hugan?
Well, I'll just talk about the, the report as a whole. I agree that this report is outstanding and, and provides so much information that not only gives us a look back, but I think that will help us go into the FY fifteen planning. And so, my question is, has, I know that you're presenting it here, has it already happened? Or is there a plan to be able to share this with members of the FINCOM as well as the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator?
No, hey.
FINCOM's got it.
Yeah, I know.
But no.
But I just meant, I mean, because I think it was available online, right?
Yeah.
People were able to pull it down, but are we being proactive and actually sending it out?
No, but I think that's an excellent idea and I'd be happy to do that.
Because then after that, and this is only, and this is through you, Mr. Chair, maybe speaking to the Chair of the FINCOM as well as the Board of Selectmen. Okay, specifically around this report for the budgeting process, I think that this would be an excellent report to be able to walk through because it not only gives you a look back at this past school year, but also, I think, gives you a great explanation of all the different key pieces of funding, as well as how we spend the money. And I think that it's important to be able to dive down a little bit longer. So if, if a workshop, not to talk about generally about the budget, but specifically around the support, around this report, if it's important to the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen, if we want to dive into this report and have Michael to go through something similar, I think it would only help us going into next year's planning.
Very good. Very good suggestion. Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Flaherty?
I know you said you wanted to wrap it up, but there's a lot more here.
Go ahead. Well, I do, I wanna wrap it up, so, give them your questions.
All right, can we go to the heating?
Go to the what?
Heating.
Heating.
What page?
Page eleven.
Okay.
And, I mean, there's a lot going on here, but, but what, what happened at Dicas? That to improve that much?
So. So I, I, I appreciate your point, I didn't include everything on the slides just for sake of time, but.
Okay.
Hey, I, on heating. So I think it was, you know, as you can see, it's not so much how it went down, but why it went up so much. And from what we understand, there were problems with thermostats in the building, so it was running hotter, you know, so we turned, you know, the temperature we turned down, but it would keep running up, and those were all serviced. There was also some issues about some other maintenance that was done to some of the pipes leading into the, the building, there was, there was potential for leaks that might have been causing it. So we made a number of improvements, number of maintenance changes, and that's helped bring the numbers down.
We might ask Dr. Panarisi for her comment on how that was lowered. We might ask Dr. Panarisi for her comment on how that was lowered.
Just while we're waiting for Dr. Panarisi, I would say, and if you ha- if there are anything we don't cover today that you want to come by to, I'm always, only too happy to, if you email, or if you wanna meet and go through things, I'd be delighted to help.
Hi, we, we were monitoring the, um, gas usage at the school, and we noticed that during certain months in the given year, that particular year where you see it really spiked, it had gone very, very high. And so we were trying to troubleshoot it, we brought people in to, to look at it, and nobody could really find anything. So what we did is we shut one boiler down and tried to isolate the issue. We did find that there was a seal, it's a pneumatic seal, and it had slipped. So basically what was happening, the gas was just keep pouring out and not really utilizing the gas for heat. That in combination, what we did is we used our, our second boiler, that in combination with keeping the heat, you know, at a certain level, and people just putting on sweaters and not being able to run around with short sleeves in the middle of winter, really did a great savings, and so we tracked that savings, and I think once we became more aware of, you know, by the tracking, it, it really showed a good, good decrease in the expenditures, allowed us to recoup from the following previous year.
Thank you.
But it was a seal, and I believe it is fixed now.
That seems to be, yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just, you know, if, I could just use that segue into the fact that we're currently advertising, or we've just finished advertising for an HVAC plumbing position, to, to get out there and stop these exact sort of things happening by undertaking, or correcting problems, we have them, but also undertaking a preventative management, so that we, 'cause a lot of the problems come from just small things that could have been done over a long period of time, that weren't done, and so, eh, because we, so, and then so you have these problems, or you, and you have high costs to fix them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going, Mr..
All right, uh, Hammond. If I look corre- if I look at it correctly, it looks like it went up a little bit, just shy of twenty thousand dollars for FY fourteen.
So.
He.
And, and I bring that up because I, I, I thought we'd be seeing some savings there where, where we don't, we don't run that school anymore, really.
We have the Boys and Girls Club there.
Yeah. Yeah, the Boys and Girls Club, what?
They're in Hammond.
Yeah, then they're the only tenant, right?
True.
But do the, do their, do their, does their lease rent cover that a hundred percent?
No.
It doesn't? Should it? If they're the only tenant.
For the first part of the year, we were in there as well.
Say again?
For the first part of the year, we were in there as well. We had groups using that, that school.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just think that, I, I saw the contract, and I, I, I revisited it, and every two years it says in there that, that the, the rent can be revisited, uh, based on heat and utilities alone. And that should definitely be looked at. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be subsidizing that. I mean, they're getting a good deal as it is.
Yeah.
All right?
Pretty soon the building will be turned over to the town, so we won't have that expenditure at all.
But we're, but we do right now.
No, I understand, but I'm saying in two years from now.
All right. Um, and i- in this, in this chart, where is the heat for the weight room accounted for?
It is under the high school.
It is under the high school. Okay. Now. I, I can keep going, I mean. Thanks.
Questions, ask them.
All right, all right, great. Uh, moving on to the Appendix A now, page twelve. Uh, very last line, employee retirement town, uh, we budgeted zero and paid a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Is that because of the early retirement packages?
I'll need to d- I'm, yeah, I think so. I'll need to double check that, I'm just not su- I believe so.
Yeah, 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 it's not ringing a bell.
Yeah, I'll double check, but I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so, so that.
Makes sense.
Um. Uh, le- um, shh, shh, I'm moving on. Student insurance, we budgeted thirty-two thousand, uh, you know, actually thirty-three thousand rounding, and, uh, paid out, uh, let, you know, about half. And so I'm just kinda curious, what, where we found the savings there for student insurance?
Well, actually, the student insurance, we actually pay a contract for student insurance, so we pay a company to provide insurance to students. So they're, we don't, we're, you know, these aren't, this is actually how much the contract cost, rather than, you know, rather than it being a pay out, money we paid out.
Okay.
But the, why it was budgeted so high in the first place, I'm not sure. I know we brought it down going into this year.
We did bring it down, okay. And, uh, and what is extraordinary maintenance? That we, we didn't budget anything, but we paid fifty-nine thousand.
So that was for the part of the high school roof, which we paid for at the start of the process.
Okay, yeah.
The, which we paid for, and then we res- we're, we have, actually, we're, we should be receiving the funds shortly.
Okay. Um, and now, tha- 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 the pupil services, uh, attendance, what is that? Like, what are we paying for there?
Which one?
Uh, it's about, it's the second item after the title pupil services on the, toward the bottom of page thirteen?
That was the student resource officer.
Oh, okay.
And, and other, actually, and some others, you know, some other, eh, student attendance related costs, so like sending letters to kids who don't go.
So he's kinda like a truant officer.
Yeah, well, that's why, yeah, that's how it's been recorded.
And just below that, food services, I, I see there's nothing, and yet I thought we paid, uh, I thought that we were expecting a deficit of sixty thousand dollars for this year.
So this is bec- this is just from the LEA, this is just from the general fund, that it's accounted for as part of a revolving fund.
Okay, okay. All right. Um, lastly, uh, page seventeen. Uh, transportation, second item for NXT.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, ending balance two fifty, eight seventy in the, in the transportation revolver.
Yep.
Um, does that include? When, when we met in July, uh, prior to the school year, there was a hundred and eighty-nine, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in there, and that represented sixty-six thousand from the prior year, plus some McKinney-Vento money. Has more McKinney-Vento money been placed in there?
So, yeah, so that, that includes, so previously included the McKinney-Vento year money from FY thirteen, and that now has the McKinney-Vento money from FY fourteen. So both those amounts are now reflected in that.
Because we were, we were, I mean, when we had that meeting, we were expecting it to be about, in any balance of about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars without added, added McKinney-Vento money. Do you know how much the McKinney-Vento money was?
It was eighty-four thousand.
So we were off by about eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, so we had a number of costs that came in in the last, you know, month or two of the year, which, and a lot, some bus co- bus related, you know, mechanical related issues, which had costs associated, and also some student transport costs for kids out of district and homeless students, which were unforeseen.
All right. Um. Two hundred and eighty-four. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I have just one quick question.
Okay.
Thanks. Will you take a look at page nine, the expenditures on substitutes? Just a quick question about the jump in the middle school. It basically doubled.
So, that is partly, uh, ju- partly due, I think I'm, partly due to an accounting change. So, what happened was, you know, there are, they brought long, so, prior to me coming in, they made a decision to track long-term substitutes at the district level. So they brought also, so, where people were, were long-term substitutes, and their wages were being uppaid at the district level.
Right, and I, I.
I moved that back to the schools.
Yeah, that was in your narrative beforehand. I just wanna make sure that that's the reason why.
Yeah, as far as I can tell, I mean, I haven't dealt, I mean, I will go into a bit more detail from that's looked to be the cause.
And then just in general, when it comes to substitutes, the middle school and high school have a significant number compared to the other schools in our district. And, I mean.
Yeah.
They do. Um, part of it is there were several long-term illnesses that we had to bring in people for long-term. That doesn't make up the entire amount, I understand, and that is something that we've been watching and having discussion about the amount of subs that we have in front of our students.
Yeah, and I just think from two, that this whole entire report, and I meant not just for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, but from two thousand and seven across the board, we're talking in some cases for, for, you know, compared to the elementaries, and again, it's, I know that there is a higher number of students in those, but not significantly, and we're talking almost, you know, more than a, um, it's a large increase over, so, okay.
Okay, um, I'd like to, uh, just, uh.
Thank you.
If anyone needs any further clarification or any further information, please to ge- to try to get ahold of Mr. McMillan, and I'm sure he'll be able to, um, to satisfy any, um, inquiry that you may have. Um, I, I have to say that, um, there are a lot of numbers in this report, and, um, to expect anyone to be able to reiterate in any kind of minute detail, um, the background between these numbers would be, um, something that would be almost next to impossible. But I thought that, um, Mr. McMillan did an admirable job in trying to, uh, clear it up for the board. Uh, and again, if the board, um, has any questions, or as they go through this information, uh, feel that they need to bring something back, certainly we can revisit this report at any time as an agenda item. So, I wanna thank you for your time. Um, it was a very comprehen- comprehensive report, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Um, at this time, uh, Madam Superintendent, uh, you've got some information on the strategic plan?
Correct. Uh, we've included the strategic plan, which has expired from two thousand nine to, to two thousand thirteen. We're in the process, the Chair, um, is assisting in this of getting a person to guide us in this planning of our strategic plan. We have plans to begin the first part of the year. We will be asking for participation from all groups, parents, community, students, faculty, staff, and of course, the school committee, but to review our str- our strategic plan and form a new one. So just to put this on your radar, that it is coming, and we do ask and look for your involvement.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Vugan.
Thank you. Uh, I was part of the original strategic plan, um, and I have to say that, and this is before I got on the school committee, and, uh, five years later, I am glad that this has expired. I was not, um, later on, when taking a look at this, compared to other districts and some of the things that they've been able to do, and how it really, um, how it is a useful tool when it comes to the planning and the goal setting on a yearly basis. I think that we did not do the job that, and again, I was part of the committee, did not do the job, um, that would benefit this district. And I thank you for printing this out and looking at it, because I compared it to, one, um, with, I've been, ever since I knew that this was about to expire, I started looking at other districts and what they've been able to accomplish around the strategic plan and how they've used it, um, as a tool, not only to bring the community together, but then also, um, to, um, hear from, it, it, it turned not only for a strategic plan in the public school system, but also a strategic plan for their actual community. So with that, I just, if it's okay with you, uh, Mr. Chair, is I just want to print out one of, or hand out one of the printouts that, um, I found from the Lincoln Public School District, and point out one piece that I hope is part of this, which is, they not only, uh, went through a strategic, strategic plan and came up with their strategic plan, but then they came up with, uh, separate action steps, um, on some of the pieces that needed to happen right away. And they went through, we talked about SMART goals, but they actually went one step further when it came to SMART goals, and went through, um, and were specific around what they were trying to do, short term and long term. And I just wanted to give you a quick example, which is, we talk about in ours around, um, how we're going to foster all students and learn to their full potential, and then we talk about high level, how we're going to do that, but very, very high level. They got as specific as increasing graduation rates by three percentage points for on-time four-year graduations by twenty sixteen. Then they go on with a focus on subgroups, and then also increasing volunteer mentors to match up by ten percent by January of twenty thirteen. And then they go into five or six different steps, um, that they are going to do in that district. And again, this is throughout all the schools. So I just wanted to hand it out as an example, um, that when we do start this process, um, I'll keep pushing for, that we kind of work within this model and, and take it more than just, you know, strategically thinking about where we know need to go as a district, and put it into action steps of what we're actually going to do, and have that part of the strategic plan, instead of waiting for the school improvement plans to do that, let's do that at a, um, at a district level.
Anyone else? The strategic plan, um, I agree to a degree with what Mrs. Vugan says. Um, the strategic plan that we developed way back when, uh, was developed using the most, um, commonly used strategic planning method there is, which is the Cook's Model. It was facilitated by Dr. Ralph Gisparo, who is, um, will, basically world-renowned in terms of, um, facilitating strategic planning process, and, uh, he, he did it, well, primarily as a favor to me. However, I do agree with, um, Mrs. Vugan, that the strategic plan never got completed. And it didn't get completed because the action plans associated with the goals were never formulated. And, um, the basis for the strategic plan is to identify those goals, um, or those strategies, or those, um, achievable goals, if you will, and then developing action plans, uh, with SMART goals, if you will, um, as part of the entire strategic planning process. I, I felt, uh, from the get-go, uh, that the process was not, um, was not completed. I- i- it didn't go far enough in terms of developing those action plans, uh, and strategies to move forward. So, uh, from that perspective, I absolutely agree with you, Rhonda, uh, that, uh, whether or not that is a good one or not, I don't know, I'll tell you when I see it.
Just one example.
But, uh, uh, this I will tell you, um, um, it, it, it's a good process, if, if you do it from start to finish. And I don't, I don't believe that there was a, a, um, a will, um, to, to get it done. And to be, to be quite honest, uh, a well-developed strategic plan should drive school improvement plans, not vice versa. So, be that as it may, uh, I'll, I'll try to get some, some good folks to facilitate it, or if anyone else knows someone that would, they'd like to bring in to facilitate it, certainly, uh, they can do that. But I honestly feel that it is the process that's most important. And if you take a look at those stakeholders, you can see that there was a cross-section, uh, of stakeholders, and we, we really did have, um, a, a cross-section of the community, uh, participating in the process. So I look forward to it, and, uh, if anyone needs any further information, I can certainly give it to them. All right, is there anything else to be said on the strategic plan? All right, moving on, Superintendent's report.
All right. Well, we're in our, we finished our second day of school. Our opening day enrollment was two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine students. We enrolled additional students today, so we'll, I'll be sending out new enrollment numbers. We have had a few glitches with transportation, as we expected. We certainly have been working on it, and today all buses were cleared by three fifty-nine, so that was certainly an improvement. We appreciate everyone's flexibility. It is a work in progress, and we will continue to improve. If there are specific concerns with transportation, though, I do urge parents to contact us, because we certainly do want to listen and work with them. You know, and at this time, I really need to thank people, because this summer was very busy. There were moves going on, there were twists and turns at every corner, and there were days that I was not sure we were going to be quite ready to open school, but, you know. And there were days that I was not sure we were going to be quite ready to open school, but, you know, through everyone's hard work, it opened. And I want to thank the cafeteria staff. We were ready to feed kids with breakfast on day one, which was spectacular. The custodians, um, the buildings look great and I can't wait to show you all the paint jobs, the shiny floors. It's, it's just remarkable. The secretaries for the enrollment of students, working through conditions where computers were taken down and moved and telephones. We still are working on some telephones for some people. Our paraprofessionals who were right in there, ready to work with kids on day one, our teachers. It's just been super. Our administrators, our central office, but more, most importantly, our parents and students. I certainly thank you for your patience, for your consideration, and then all the enthusiasm that everyone has shown on, on day one and day two. And at this time, there's often people in central office that unless they're called upon, you, you might not know that they're even here. So I would just like to briefly introduce Dr. Marx, uh, Director of Special Student Services. Mr. McMillan, Business Manager, and we know Mr. McMillan well for his fine reports. Dr. Panarisi for Grants and Data Analysis. And our new person that's joined us, Dr. Andrea Schwab, uh, Director of Curriculum. So, welcome. I just wanted you to see their faces and know what an important role they play for our district. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Uh, does anyone on the school committee have a report to give? Hearing none, seeing none. Uh, at this time, we'll go to any other business. Does anyone have other business? Mr. Flaherty.
Uh, thank you. Um, I read something today and it piqued my interest. Uh, I, I recall we had a discussion about, um, outsourcing the custodians and we decided not to do that or to hold off or what have you. But I'm, I'm, I'm reading that perhaps some tasks of cleaning have been outsourced. Is that, is that true?
For the summer?
I don't know, I just think.
Yes. Yes, we did outsource some cleaning during the summer. We worked with the, um, custodial union. There, the custodians had expressed some concern about the number of moves that we were making, um, and being able to get everything completed. So in conjunction with the custodial union, we did do a one-time for cleaning, for decas, for mine it, and for east. Um, and during the time moves were going on, custodians were moved either to the high school or to the middle school to help. And it was a, an agreement that was brought on by the custodians' union because of concern expressed with the number of moves. It is not going to continue and it was just one time.
It's, it's a temporary arrangement.
It was a one-time.
All right, thank you.
Any other business? All right, at this particular time, we are going to have to go into executive session for the purpose of, uh, teacher unit A contract negotiations. Uh, I'll have to have, uh, an independent vote from each individual, uh, staff members. We will not be taking any votes when we reconvene. We'll only be reconvening, uh, to adjourn. So I need a vote to go into execu-, I need a motion to go to executive session.
So moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
For the purpose of, I should have added that, for the purpose of contract negotiation. Uh, I'll take a ro-, individual roll call. Mr. Lazarus?
Yes.
Uh, I say yes. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Bugan?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we are now in executive session and we will only be returning to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.